...meeting for Tuesday, May 16th to order at 7:02. And we'll start as we always do with the clerk's report and approval of the minutes of May 2nd. Is there a motion?
I approve of the minutes, May 2nd.
May 2nd, and seconded by Mike. Alright, any questions, thoughts, concerns, issues with those minutes? Kane, I will speak for Ruth when I say thank you. Welcome back, and we're glad to have you back for the minutes.
That's big for myself. Thank you so much for being back.
Alright, so all those in favor approving the minutes as May 2nd, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Okay. Any other communications from anybody tonight? No? Alright, so no communications, we'll move on to recognition of groups and individual visitors, just visiting to watch or...
I would like to invite everyone assembled here for the May 26 Theorems Out Loud performance in Block 2.
Can you remind us what time Block 2 is for those of us that aren't on a block schedule?
10:15-ish if it's a normal day.
Okay.
And we're going to be participating as part of the new, well Steve will have to tell you, the Arts Day or something.
Excellent, thank you. Alright.
If it's like it was a couple of years ago, very entertaining.
Alright, other than that, we'll move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to enter consent agenda?
So I'll move.
Second.
Okay, alright, and we'll start with Finance, Building, and Transportation.
Finance, not on May 5th. And we approved perils, peril of April 1st in the amount of $432,214.07. April 15th of $434,477.78. And April 29th in the amount of $434,826.38. And we approved warrant numbers 1172, 1174, 1175, 1177, 1178, and 1179 in the amount And warrant numbers 1180, 1181, 1183, 1184, 1185, and 1186 in the amount of $976,687.99. And we also reviewed and had a discussion with some people from People's United Bank concerning the non-IMES fund endowment fund management. The gentleman, Mr. Shamrock, who's been doing this, Doris has retired, and so we need to find someone else to do that, which we're going to discuss at our next meeting, which will be on the 19th, this coming Thursday at 8:00 a.m. in the James King Conference Room. Where we're going to talk about the support staff agreement, the foreign travel policy, and the endowment fund management.
Excellent.
Did I miss anything, Mr. Woodwell?
No, I would just say that the consensus was that People's United Wealth Management Group was well qualified to do this. We liked the blend of their proposal for assets, which is slightly different than, it's Peter Sherlock, slightly different than his approach and a little closer to the IMES approach that's being used by both Wells Fargo and Edward Jones. And so the consensus of the group and Frank's recommendation as business manager was that we place that portion of our endowment in their hands.
And you'll make that final decision this Thursday and then full board approval after that?
Well, my understanding was that it was a finance committee and business manager recommendation, so how did you take that?
But you're going to do that Thursday morning officially?
Yeah.
Well, actually, we voted on it.
We voted, yeah.
Yeah.
I think Frank sent us an email tonight and the agenda...
Yeah, it's on.
Corporate resolution to establish new kind of People's United Bank Wealth Management Group for Endowment Fund Management.
Okay, so we have, we've agreed to, we have to sign a corporate resolution. And does that then come to the, I don't know that for sure. I'm sure Frank will take, follow the right procedure.
Yeah?
Yep.
Great. Alright, WSCSU Finance.
We have not met since the last meeting. Meet again a week from Wednesday at 5:00. And then there's an SU meeting, a SU Board meeting on 23rd of the Monday, or 22nd.
Great. Planning and Policy.
Planning and Policy have not met as, or have not had any policies come down to review. However, it's my understanding that we will soon.
Great. Teacher Curriculum Committee.
Has also not met.
BAMS Committee.
BAMS Committee also has not met.
Alright, WRCC.
WRCC Committee has met, indeed, on April 29th, and we reviewed the upcoming, at the time was upcoming, now it's gone by, AOE five-year review that happened last 15 years ago, and it's a five-year annual review or something like that, right? And discussed what issues were going to be discussed, and Michael filled us in a little bit on what he had prepared for them. And we also, Ruth was designated to visit with the AOE as they interviewed various stakeholders in the business. And we also were both in attendance at the Regional Advisory Board meeting on May 10, where the AOE was actually there for their review. And it was a great presentation, maybe probably I'm stealing your thunder now, but great presentation Michael had about the Career Center, and it was a good noon meeting with the Agency of Education. It was our regular May meeting of the Regional Advisory Board.
Great. Alright, WSCSU Act 46 Study Committee.
Okay, let me give you a brief summary. As of May 6th, that was a date that we would send our final revised study committee report to the AOE. We got word that they would not be ready for us on May 17th with the State Board of Education. There were still issues unresolved with the Vernon issue of pulling out of the study committee. We knew we were waiting for an opinion from the AOE. We received a letter, you know, the next Tuesday, I think it was on the 10th, May 10th, indicating as we had been told that Vernon had no legal authority to withdraw from the study committee. So what we'll be doing is meeting with our legal counsel this Wednesday to consider the options, and what we'd like to do is review those with the study committee and the Vernon School Board. We do have a study committee scheduled for Thursday, May 26th, in Putney at 6:00 p.m. So that was to replace the canceled meeting from last week. And I tend to think that on the May 23rd SU meeting, this Supervising Union Board meeting will have some discussion at that point as well. But the study committee will not have met. We may have some legal advice in terms of some of the options. I think we know some of the options now, but I'd like to confirm that with the person that's working with the study committee.
Thank you. Alright, yeah Sean?
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment on the Act 46 deal?
Sure.
I really felt as if it was a really bad missed opportunity not to have the Articles Agreement put together in such a way that they could have been sent up to the AOB and be satisfactory. And I'm really disappointed that it didn't come to a vote this year. So we've lost the opportunity for the public to vote on it. And I went to every, almost every meeting of the 18 meetings, and I really feel as if we didn't complete our job. The job wasn't complete, I really feel that. And I really think it's a thing, it's too bad that the community didn't get an opportunity to vote. I think that if they had, it would have been a really good straw poll, whether it passed or it didn't pass, I think we would have learned a tremendous amount for it. If it had passed, then that meant that the incentives would have been available to the SU. Now that it is not going to happen, because it can't come to a vote before April 30th, that means that, I sort of anticipate from what I've learned, that there's a good possibility that the state education tax will have to go up in order to cover the SUs that do actually receive the incentive. So in addition to not receiving the 10 cent incentive, the districts that didn't vote for it are going to have to make up the difference. So I can't help but feeling sad that it didn't come to fruition. I'd just like to state that.
Thank you Sean.
I guess I'd just say, Sean, I know we work really hard, and we put a lot of work into that study report that people at the agency had weeks in advance. So, you know, maybe a letter to the secretary would be appropriate.
Well, actually, I talked with Donna Rissel-Savage afterwards on Wednesday, and, you know, she sort of indicated to me that there was no way that the Articles Agreement as presented on that, what would be Thursday, prior, they were not complete enough for their consideration. So I felt as if that's the bottom line.
Well, that's her opinion. What I'd like to do is talk with you privately about what I know related to this, because that's not the whole picture.
Well, I hope, I hope that it's, I mean, I hope it's all right to express the way I feel, since I was involved. I was very, very involved. I wrote two letters to my paper that Guilford Gazette. I wrote, I went to the Brattleboro Reforver and said, it was a front page article on just what I felt personally, and then I wrote a letter also to the Reformer last, the week before the last meeting, just, you know, expressing my hopes. So I was involved, and I'm just glad, so I guess that's the bottom line.
Yes.
As my personal thoughts.
Just to make a brief comment, having gone to most of the meetings, there was a huge amount of work there. It was an awesome, awesome job, and again, I'm speaking for myself, but I think some other folks too felt like it was a little bit at the very end, all of a sudden the rug got pulled out, and it didn't necessarily need to be. So that's my two cents worth. It was, I think it was a great job and a logical approach to the way to deal with it that was unfortunately came apart at the last minute.
It was definitely a intense process, I think, for a lot of people, and, but it was intense for a long time just with the amount of work that was put in, mostly by Central Office. The staff at Central Office worked hard too.
You too as well.
And, you know, at the last minute, I think you're right, I agree with you, that at the last minute it feels like things just got slammed on the brakes really fast. Mike?
Well, as the Vernon member, I did not have any input on the withdrawal, or was I asked for any input on the withdrawal? But the one statement I find, Ron just said it, and it was in the newspaper, that Vernon had no legal authority to withdraw from the study committee. I can't believe, it seems ludicrous to me that there would be a law making somebody belong to a study committee. It's a study committee, I think that would be optional, but...
Well, I think the law is that if they voted in, they're in, and it's not like they have a choice to win, or on say...
It's not just a study committee, it's the whole process.
And my understanding is, and this was a slightly, it's quite an important one, it's not that Vernon doesn't have the right to withdraw, it's that the Vernon School Board does not have the right to make that decision. It has to go to the voters of Vernon at this point.
I have one more question. So, we didn't get, well, there's a difference of opinion, whether we got it there in time, whether it was complete and whatever. Did other schools have the same timetable and get it accomplished?
Yeah. I think there were 10 districts that did approve it, you know, prior to, prior to May 30, June 30th, so it's 10 out of a total, is it 18 SUs in the state? And then there's some districts also, so it was a good chunk.
There were 40 separate school districts that merged in March, and then there's a whole nother set that are doing it on June 30th.
Yeah. I mean, our stated goal was to, I think as a district, was to have a vote prior to June 30th. So the fact that we didn't kind of indicates to me that, you know, we didn't meet our goal. So, you know, proficiency-based learning, we didn't meet the proficiency. So, you know, we can go on now, but, you know, vote on kind of...
I think there's still a lot for us to learn and figure out as we go forward, you know, because the one thing that I think has been clear all along, whether we completed it in time and it got sent to the agency in time, or whether the agency approved it or didn't approve it, if they didn't approve it, we were going to continue this process in a more expanded way. So, and I think for some people that's going to make them feel a lot better, because they were upset about being rushed, what they felt was being rushed. So I think that that might be helpful, and it'll be, give a chance to answer some of these legal questions and what's happening. So I think, you know, I'm optimistic that in the short term we didn't hit things, but we're going to get there eventually, so. Anything else about Act 46 or for consent agenda?
Okay, so is there a motion to approve consent agenda?
I will approve consent agenda.
Alright, Rush, you can have the second. How's that? Alright, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? No? Okay, so let's move on to administrative reports. Why don't we start down the far end of the table, Mr. Ling?
Alright, everyone. Uh, Kamola, just reviewing some events coming up, and things have happened recently. I want to start with something that happened I talked to you about last time. We had Diversity Day on May 6th, and that's something the district does every year. And I wanted to thank Michaela Sims, who is a diversity coordinator for BU6, and one of our social studies, and teachers Anne Complique-Lair, who helped organize the Diversity Day for us. And we had, I mentioned, a dance group come, and then they did traditional Indian dance. And then we transitioned and did a movie, pretty powerful movie on gender, where it was excerpts of a movie, middle school appropriate, on gender, and then the groups went back as advisories and talked about the issues that were brought up. It was pretty powerful, I thought. And, you know, when you start talking about gender in our societies, there's a lot of, a lot of topics to discuss, and I think there was some great conversations. We are, we have a few positions that we're currently interviewing for and hoping to hire people for coming up. The music position, Mr. Nishaka's leaving our peak, new peak math science position, hoping to fill that right away here, and then technology integration. So three positions I'm aware of right now that we're trying to fill. Currently, we just finished eighth grade's kneecap science testing, and as you can imagine, the kneecaps are the pencil and paper tests, and you have a whole set of protocols you have to go through as a proctor, and all the teachers are trained. And then the next week, we moved in, this week, today was the first day of the SBACK testing, which is Smarter Balance testing on the Common Core. So both seventh and eighth grade take that. And that's all computerized, and so we're right in the middle of that. It was smoother this year than last year. Interesting to note that all 320 kids can test all at once online in our system, and the teachers have really noticed. I do want to, while I'm on this, compliment Mr., our technology department, the whole technology department's really upgraded our, Bob Wickberg and George Berniger and Paul Morris updated our infrastructure to allow that kind of, last year a lot of kids struggled to actually get logged into the computer just to start the test, and we had classrooms where kids couldn't get it logged in. We're running around. This year it was very smooth, and a lot of teachers have noticed that, so they've done a lot. But so far, the testing's gone well. It's always challenging when kids are absent, and you gotta try and find time for them to make them up, and all of that stuff. Our Pops Concert, I've mentioned this before, is this coming Thursday, the 19th, 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium. It's always a great show, and we do a show that afternoon for the kids in the auditorium, so looking forward to that. The Pops Concert, you know, jazz bands and a little more pop to it.
When is that, I think?
The 19th, this Thursday, yeah. Our, we're having, Mr. Holiday, Bill Holiday is putting together a Vietnam, it's a ceremony to celebrate Memorial Day on the 27th. I don't know if you were going to talk about it at all, but maybe Steve can talk about the details, but the middle school is invited by Mr. Holiday, so we're going to, we're going to go over. That's 9:00 a.m. the 27th, outside the front. And last but not least, this last Thursday evening was the annual retirement dinner that we do, and I'm pleased to tell you that one of our BAMS paraprofessionals, Sue Mitchell, was awarded the Madeline Moore Award, and that was pretty special for our school. And it was a big deal to her. She was, I really touched by it, and that if you, if you know the history, well, I don't know the history that well, but it's a pretty prestigious honor to, the awards named after a woman who worked in this central office and district for many years. And so we're pretty pleased to have one of, one of ours win that award. It's a district-wide, SU-wide award for a staff member, so. And Sue, if you don't know Sue, she's one of the crossing guards out here, and just brings the most spirit you could imagine to a school. Always dressing up for St. Patty's Day and every holiday you could imagine. She's, she's really great for kids and for the staff, so. That's all I have. Any questions? Alright.
Excellent, thanks. Why don't we just move down the table to BUHS?
Sure. First, I'd like to hand out copies of our final newsletter of the year. Again, thanks to Andrea Goggan for the work she does on the newsletter. This is her third year doing it, and every year she gets a little bit better. Things in here, end of year schedules in here, final exam schedule, some other great stuff, so take a second and peruse that. Our, we have a huge announcement to make tonight, and that is, in one year, on May 10th through the 13th, 2017, BUHS has the honor of hosting the 90th Vermont All-State Music Festival. Very prestigious honor. It will bring 400 of Vermont's top high school musicians here. It'll also bring 25 marching bands to town, and they will all be marching at the same time, hopefully in the same direction. This is the, this is the third time BUHS has hosted it, but it's the first time since 2001. So Steve Rice has worked hard already doing preparation. We will be approaching a lot of people about housing students that week, and also Steve is looking for people to join various tasks around town and also the high school. So, you know, if Steve approaches you, please consider helping out. It's a huge undertaking, and we're excited to have it coming here. Last Saturday, actually a week ago Saturday, we hosted the junior prom, and the junior prom was actually held here at BUHS, which is always a nice thing to do. Kate Burt, health teacher and paraprofessional Carrie Bentley, did a phenomenal job of decorating our gymnasium using vances and lighting to make some very nice dramatic uplighting from the floor. And during the prom, you know, we were glad to see Kona Ice came and gave snow cones to everybody, which is a nice touch, as well as a pretty high-tech photo booth and a lot of other events during the festivities. And it was a great prom, and it was nice to see we had over 200 students here. And they were all dressed, you know, the fashion this year was kind of pastel colors for the ladies, and very demure this year. A lot of floor-length gowns, which was nice to see. So, I'm not going to go any further on the fashion. However, some of the, no. On the 26th, as Kevin pointed out, we are doing our first ever Arts Day, and this is a day that our art department has organized, where, you know, teachers can choose to bring their classes if they wish to a whole series of events going on all day long. And, you know, it really is an incredible range. Everything from Theorems Out Loud to circus workshops. We're having an Iron Chef competition. We're doing history through the art and music. How to work with a client if you're an artist, and how to kind of work with a client and business relationship. We're going to film, we're going to screen some student films, juggling, weaving, knitting. And in Block 4, we're doing a industry versus nature fashion and sculpture show. And so there's a huge number of events going on, and, you know, this will be posted publicly so everybody can see all of the events. We're pretty excited for that. May 25th is the BUHS Pops Concert. Steve and Patty have put together an incredible program. Everything from Motown to classical will be there, and so we hope to see people at that event as well.
You say the 25th?
The 25th is the Pops Concert, yeah. For the past two weeks, we did administer the science kneecaps, and, you know, we did that with our junior class. And, you know, I want to thank the juniors and their advisors and parents for kind of supporting them through this process. As Keith said, that's a written exam, and it's a little incongruous at this point, you know, because the science kneecap uses a certain body of curriculum, certain expectations, that we're actually not using in the high school anymore. We've moved on to the next generation science standards. And, but, you know, our students did give their best effort, and I'm kind of excited to see how they did. But we've certainly modified our curriculum since then. Also, as long as Keith was talking about my stuff, we did have diversity today here as well. And I also want to add my thanks to Michaela for her work getting ready and inviting in a wide range of speakers from all walks of life to kind of share their experiences with our students. I also want to point out that several of our students did presentations. You know, our Ware group did a panel discussion. Our Belize trip did a great presentation on the culture of Belize and the diversity of Belize. And our GSA did a great... on the culture of Belize and the diversity of Belize. And our GSA did a great presentation on gay, lesbian, transgender issues, which was also very well-received. And on May 27th, Bill Holiday is organizing a very special Memorial Day kickoff. We had a student who was working with the family of a veteran from the Vietnam War. And that veteran, you know, came home, you know, they died in service. And when they came home, the parent was awarded the flag from the casket. And it was, you know, very touching. And when this student worked with the family, the family offered to the student that they could have the flag. And the student kind of felt that was an overwhelming honor. And so what we've organized for the 27th is an honor guard that will fly that flag to BUHS. So there'll be a ceremony, that flag will be raised, it will then be lowered and presented to the family after it's been flown. And so, you know, kudos to Bill Holiday for organizing that. It's really kind of, I have goosebumps just thinking about that. It's just a great opportunity. And that will be on the front lawn on the 27th, begins at 9 o'clock, should be 52 minutes long. So that'll be, it'll be a nice event. A lot of folks from the town coming, and so we're excited for that. The 23rd, I mentioned this at the last meeting, we are having our continuous improvement plan for the 2016-17 school year. I would love to have board members attend that. Please let me know if you're interested. It's from 8:45 to 11:30. And what we do is we look at specific elements of our improvement plan, and we kind of plan for next year. That's why it's a planning room. So if you're interested, please let me know.
What date is that again?
The 23rd. Finally, we, Liz DeNord, who is BUHS Art Department Chair, has taken a medical leave for the remainder of the year. You may recall that Liz is retiring at the end of this year, and so she's opting to take retirement a little early while she confronts some medical issues that are facing her. We expect she's going to do well, but she does need to take the time now to take care of this. Many of us know Liz. We know that she has been a tireless advocate for students for many years here, both special education students and art. She's a special educator as well as an art teacher. She's also led the department very well for the past several years. And she is also great working with Bob on the Governor's Institute, and she's been a tireless advocate of that program as well. We are arranging substitute coverage for her. We're using a combination of the substitute, we believe. And we're hoping also to use some of our teachers to kind of help shape those lesson plans. So I just wanted to let the board know that, you know, Liz is on medical leave now. And, you know, obviously, we look forward to hearing from her soon, and we look forward to seeing her in the future, so. Thank you.
And I just want to say, before we move on to the Career Center, that in 2001, the last time BUHS hosted the All-State Music Festival, it was, it was an incredibly, incredible thing to see all that energy of all those kids here. My son was in the band at the time, and I had extra high school students staying at my house. And when the, when all the marching bands marched, I think every single parent of a band kid had a job to do that Steve just signed us up to do. So I was given, I was given a school and told, make sure they don't get out of line and walk with them, and walk the parade room, which was really fun. And it was just to see their energy and what a great job the music department did. So I encourage next year for everyone to come out and be, see the shows, be part of that, and watch the parade. And we'll move on to the Career Center.
Thanks, Rick.
So we'll start with horticulture. Last week, over 20 students had an opportunity to plant over 1,600 feet of potato beds in the former Familari Farm property, which is now called the Food Connects and School Harvest Farm. So kudos to them. The potatoes are destined for the local food shelves and also will help low-income families in the Brattleboro area, which is nice. Collaboration between Food Connects and Circle Mountain Farm has been established for distribution and maintenance of the potatoes for the upcoming growing season. So a nice collaboration between the three organizations and our students. Sports marketing class will be planning, and they've been planning an event for the entire Career Center that will be held on June 3rd. And the event will allow students within three blocks of time during the day to get outside and just have fun and enjoy each other's company and relax a little bit before the end of the school year. So if you're, you want to come out for a dunking in the pool, in the booth, or a face, a pie in the face, come on out. That's all I know about right now.
I'm surprised.
Sign up for that. I think they're gonna try to get me in the dunking booth, so we'll see how that works.
What's the date of that?
June 3rd. Our construction program throughout this year has created and built kiosks for the town of Brattleboro. And these kiosks are completed, and they'll be placed within all the metered parking spots in town over the, I guess, the ticket booths themselves to keep people dry or in out of weather during our southern Vermont weather that we have. And so if you, next time you see those, remember the construction students at the Career Center built those. And they did a wonderful job constructing and crafting these projects for the town. And we enjoy building and crafting items for the town of Brattleboro and surrounding towns as well. And then the kids, as they are cruising through town or walking through town, they can say, yes, I helped build that. And it really makes them feel good about themselves. So it's great to work in a community that appreciates our skill and craftsmanship that we can offer. FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, will be attending National Leadership Conference during the week of June 27th. And this year, it'll be held in Atlanta, Georgia. And seven students that place first in the state of Vermont will be attending this with their advisors, Mary Beth Cornell and Barb Vincy. So this is a great opportunity for the students. Some of them have never been out of Vermont, and it's really exciting for them to fly in a plane and enjoy the, what a big city has to offer for them. So good luck to those students on their national competitions. As, what you mentioned earlier, we had an AOE visit for WRCC last week on the 10th and 11th. And it was a really nice review of the, a five-year review that hasn't been completed since 15 years ago, according to the AOE representatives. Kind of inside joke that we have going on here. But they will be completing and compiling a report of their findings and commendations. And I look forward to their findings. I will, we won't get it for another three or four weeks. And I will share that report probably next school, beginning of next school year, when we receive it, and we go back and forth and we look at it. But a few of the highlights, I won't, I don't want to share yet until the final report is filed. But it was a really enlightening review, and my teachers and staff really enjoyed the process as well, to be in the lens for a day and a half from the three AOE representatives that they respect. So it'll be nice to move forward with that for the growth of the WRCC. And we'll be having also upcoming interviews for our forestry position. Dennis Hamilton is retiring after many, many years. And also, our horticulture position, Sam Rowley is moving on to a position in central Vermont. So stay tuned for recommendations from myself to the board. They'll occur over the next three weeks. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Central Office?
Yeah, just again, the Supervisory Union Board Meeting is going to be May 23rd, Monday, a week from Monday, in Vernon at 6:30. We're also trying to get the board representatives for the classified negotiations together, because I think we're presenting a one-year extension for the classified staff. So Ricky is BUHS's. And what we're proposing is to meet at 6:00 before the SU Board Meeting. So we'll fill you in on that. Actually, it's going to be reviewed as well at the BUHS Finance Meeting Thursday morning, and probably the SU Finance Meeting on the 25th as well. Just an upcoming date, the summer food program kickoff is going to happen June 3rd, Friday, June 3rd, at the Boys &amp; Girls Club at 5:00. There's probably, again, 12 sites throughout the area that students are able to get free meals during the summer. So it's a really great program for our community. And so we'll kick that off at the Boys &amp; Girls Club.
Well, actually, if the weather's nice, we're going to be outside in this old Snell parking lot, kind of between us and the old Snell building. In that parking lot, that'd be outdoors and barbecuing if the weather permits. If not, we'll be indoors.
And that's it?
Okay.
Until we get further on.
Yeah, and I don't have anything pressed from the board chair. So we're moving on to unfinished business. And we have one thing listed under unfinished business, which is our board vacancy, which is our Putney representative. And do you have any?
No, I don't.
I don't either. So we're, we still have that Putney vacancy. I know that, I've had conversations with members of the Putney Board, and they are working on it. But I don't, but I, when I saw it on the agenda, I thought maybe there was, that something had come up that I missed. Okay.
So we'll keep advertising.
Hopefully, we get somebody willing for Putney. So anybody out there from Putney who would like to serve?
Yep.
We let the town school board know in Putney. Anything else from unfinished business tonight? All right, new business, and that, and we have one thing under there, which is auditor appointments.
Do you have the name?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Well, just to bring everybody up to speed, we, one of our three auditors, Richard DeGray, Marshall Wheelock, and Gary Carrier, Gary is moving away, or has moved, and is unable to fill the last year of his position as BUHS auditor. And this started before we, before Ricky was the chair, so I'm not jumping into his activities. But so it was suggested that, it was a few names suggested, but one rose to the top, and that was Steve Lemke, who is from Guilford. So we would have not all three Brattleboro auditors, which is probably not a bad idea for a change. And Steve has just recently retired from Rhodes Scholar, which is Rhodes Scholar Travel, or whatever it's called. It used to be the Elder Hospital. It's the group that took over that business from Lion Travel. I believe Steve worked for Lion for quite a few years, executive with them. And now is retired and has been somewhat active, at least in Guilford affairs, has good financial acumen, and was willing, when I ran by him, to step in for that final year. So we did, as the Finance Committee concur, that that was a good choice. And I believe tonight, we would ask to, that he be appointed to fill the remaining term of Gary Carrier as BUHS auditor.
That sounds like a motion to me.
If it was a motion, I'll second it.
Okay, it was a motion.
All right. Any questions for, on the motion? None? All right, all those in favor? Seagull clear out?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? None? All right, passes.
I don't know if, is there any official paperwork that would have to come from Central Office?
We will, we will follow through on that. And then I think it gets posted for the next voting cycle for a regular.
Right, yes, it would, yeah. Yeah, this is, this was the last year that Gary's done. So it'll be next January's, once a year, get together. I would think he'll, Steve will be involved with it, yeah.
Excellent. All right. Is there anything else under new business for the board tonight?
Ricky?
Anything else? Yes.
I have a question for the administrators. What's the status of the restrooms at this school? I'm hearing a lot about restrooms in schools lately, so I just wondered about this.
They work well.
They all flush.
I'm just, I'm really cold. Right. They all, I assume you refer to the transgender.
I am.
Why, do you want to start? Do you want to start?
Why don't you start?
Thanks. So, you know, we've gotten the guidance from federal government, and states kind of concurred with that, that students should be allowed to use the restroom to which, which corresponds to the gender that they identify with. You know, we also have several gender-neutral restrooms that are, that are available as well. You know, we actually, at the high school, we had a similar incident. This came up, I want to say, four or five years ago. It was one of the first things that, that when I became the principal that I dealt with. And, you know, essentially, we're following that same policy at the high school, that, you know, students can use the restroom that they identify. We do make students aware that they can use the gender neutral if they choose to.
And that's consistent with the elementary schools. We have had transgender students at the, you know, fourth, fifth, sixth grade. And schools are very accommodating in terms of the identification that the student feels comfortable with. And some schools will have, like the nurse's office, as a gender neutral for any student, but it's not required that they go there. So I haven't heard any complaints, and I think it's going really well.
Good.
Excellent. All right. Anything else for new business for this evening?
Karen, none? I will adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? There you go.